On our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first start off the meeting if everyone could please rise for a moment of silence. And now I wanted to turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Mark Kerbel. He's going to be introducing two superstar students we have from the McCarthy School. Dr. Kerbel?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce two students and I would like them just to come up and just stand so everybody can see them. And they're with the Assistant Principal of the McCarthy School Nancy Manning and Nancy could come up as well and be near the students. I want to introduce Ty Morley and Ty is a 5th grade student in Mrs. Manning's classroom. He is the Treasurer of the McCarthy School Student Government. His favorite subject is math and he enjoys playing sports and video games. Ty is a two-year member of the McCarthy School Basketball Team. He also plays lacrosse and soccer. In addition to sports, Ty is also skilled at coding. He told me that as soon as this is over, he's going to go home and do his homework, right Ty? Next to him is Calliope Pampanatanakis. Calliope is a 5th grade student in Mrs. Manning's class. She's the President of the Student Government. Her favorite subject is English Language Arts and she enjoys dancing. Calliope is a member of the Crystal Joy Dance Academy. She also dances on the competitive team. Her favorite dance competition last year, was last year, because she was able to tap dance. And so they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause).
And now I'd like to go to the next item of business as our Student Advisory Council. We have Rebecca, John Edward, Edson, Paul and Dante here today to give us an update on what's taking place over at PBD High School. So please, yeah, bring up your chairs and looking forward to hearing from you. Oh, yeah, great. All right. Okay, we'll turn it over to you however you'd like to start. Rebecca?
Good evening. I'll just start by introducing myself and we'll go down and then we'll start with our agenda. I'm Rebecca, I am a senior.
I'm Dante and I'm a freshman.
I'm Paul and I'm also a freshman.
My name is John Edward and I am a senior.
And I am Edson and I am junior.
So to begin our presentation, second semester just started a few weeks ago, so we're a few weeks into the second half of the year. We also recently just came back from February break, so we're all adjusting to coming back to school. With a new semester, a few changes have taken place in our school. So instead of a three lunch 5th period, we now have two lunches and two, a split period for 5th. There were initial problems with crowded spaces in the cafeteria, but those have been resolved by moving a few classes on the 3rd floor to 2nd bunch where the 1st and 2nd floor go to lunch during 5th period. We've also been trying to shift our focus towards student improvement, so that includes attendance rate, encouraging the underclassmen to do well on their MCAS, encouraging seniors to finish the year off strong, not a senior slide, and also trying to get more underclassmen to take more APs and get our AP scores up. We've also had a new committee this year called the PTSO, the Parent Teacher Student Organization, and right now we are currently focusing on vaping issue in our school, bathroom policies, and a few students will be taking a trip to Nashville South to have a look at the Tanner Time Policy that will be implemented next year or in the following years. And there will also be video presentations to individual grades in March about vaping.
Great, thank you Rebecca.
So various fundraisers for the high school include, so our juniors are selling lanyards and superfan t-shirts, so, yeah, and at the student faculty basketball game on March 11th, the freshmen will be selling customs, or they will be selling a, yeah, it's a, it's like a, sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, so it's a, yeah, it's a raffle, it's a raffle, for a custom pair of late night customs, either vans or basically vans, yeah. It's a custom shoe which we sell tickets for and then it'll be raffled at the staff for the student faculty basketball. And seniors are selling tickets for a senior auction in March, which is annual. Student council sold Valentines to raise money for Boston Children's Hospital, which was new, yeah, which was new this year, yeah, that's about the fundraisers.
Great job Dante.
Thank you.
For the Performing Arts Group, the band will be taking a trip down to Philadelphia to compete against other bands in April. They held a Cannon Bottle Drive fundraiser to get money for that trip. The Corral also had a masterwork concert and they fundraised with singing Valentines around the school, which was done by the acapella. The Corral and the 8th grade, and the 8th grade band, oh, I'm sorry, the Corral and the 8th graders had a collaborative concert which was going to be on March 11th. For sports, we're currently transitioning from winter to spring sports with signups taking place for tennis, track, lacrosse, baseball and softball. And for winter track, they were the NEC champs, the Beverly 300 race was redone, they were the all-state track champions and many athletes are now moving to Nashville in the world.
Great, great. Thank you Paul.
PBD High has a lot of extracurricular activities after school and they have been very busy past month organizing fundraisers and after-school activities. The Community Service Club had a fundraiser at Fuddruckers on January 24th, it was called Burgers for Benefits. The National Honor Society has sent out applications and invitations for eligible juniors and seniors. And current NHS members have been actively participating in community-based projects. This year we are working on two blood drives in March and in April and throughout this year we have been continuing to offer tutoring services to students who are in need of it. DECA has a state competition this week on Thursday in Boston, from Thursday to Saturday, they're leaving 4th period and staying until Saturday and they're staying in the Copley Hotel in Boston. Student Government has had meetings and we have already voted on people in City Council and School Committee and they are in process of creating motions. The Ski and Snowboard Club has had a trip last Friday. The Legacy Club has had a Community Service Day at Citizens in Haven from Hunger this past February break.
Great, thanks John Edward.
So adding on what Johnny said, so the Gay Straight Alliance Club, where's Ms. Taylor? Yep, she is our advisor and that club is going to be, going to a dance. The dance is called Gala. It'll be hosted by Wilburn High School on March 13th. This will be the second year that Wilburn High School has, going to be doing this. It's a lot of fun. I went last year, it was great, had an amazing time. Also Leap, as you can see on the board, Learn, Explore, Aspire, Pursue. It's a, basically a program that assists with college preparation. It benefits both juniors and seniors with the application process and stuff for like college. Recently, we had a college tour for both Salem, Salem and PBD. We went to Bridgewater State University, La Salle University, Framingham State University and Merrimack College. It was pretty cool, I learned a lot on both four schools. The CT program, a few students in the Medical Assisting Program have applied for the STEM Program at Boston Children's Hospital and I was one of them and I just can't wait to hear what they're gonna say. It's going to be during April vacation, so, yeah. So the CT students from the like Cosmo, medical, et cetera, et cetera, went to North Shore Community College to take the AccuPlacer test in Limb Campus. As what Johnny said, for the blood drive, so in March 27th, it will be in honor of Judy Mediateus and April 11th would be for Kara Murtagh. Also Salem News came to the Medical Assisting Program and interviewed some students and I about the vision of the graduate and how it impacted like the school and the programs.
Yeah, front page.
Yep. So for the ROTC program, the Military Ball will be this Friday at the Dan Rivers Sport Yacht Club, the 28th of February, which Dr. Lord will be attending. It'll be fun, a lot of fun.
Gordy!
Oh, yeah. There'll be two drill competitions in March, one on March 14th and the 28th. The 28th will be a home game, a home competition at PBD, the Fieldhouse. We also went to a Rhode Island trip last December and we went to go see and fly the C-130J. It was a lot of fun. I was scared at first, but I made it through. So, yeah, and then for the PBD Youth Advisor Council, we made hearts for hearts for both students and staff. It's all around the cafeteria and it's in the mini hallway in the back of the office where, yeah. So, so scheduling for juniors, sophomores and freshmen are done, like so they put in their classes for next year and what they want on Avions. Guidance Councils will be going down to the Higgins to finalize rising first-year schedules. Navions updated with juniors and seniors' class ranks. Scholarship booklet and applications are, they were made available and new scholarship opportunities are added, are being added. Career speaker series, so the students have given the opportunity to learn more about various different career paths and the one that's going to be coming up is in March 18 and it'll be All Things Medical. So upcoming test days, SATs will be on the first week of March for juniors and the MCAS English test will be sometime in March.
Edson, thank you, thank all of you. As I've said before, this is extremely important and valuable to have all of you come and talk about what's taking place at PBD High School, give us these updates, talk about, you know, the different activities and events and work that's taking place. You know, we have these meetings, we talk a lot about different issues, but it's extremely important to hear what's taking place and the effect school's having on your lives. So that's terrific and I want to thank you for being here. You each did a terrific job. Any, any committee members have any questions for the group? All right, well, thank you so much for being here, really appreciate your time. Thank you all. (Applause). I don't think, I don't think Olivia.
Oh, I'm right here.
Where's Olivia? Oh, there you are, Olivia. One of my favorites, Olivia O'Connor, please come up here and read your essay, that was incredible. Olivia prepared an essay that was read at the PBD Legacy Awards Ceremony that we had here at the Higgins Middle School. I think when you walked in, you saw all the names of educators that are on the wall that have contributed greatly to the city of PBD, our students, and Olivia read an essay that day that she prepared that I thought was just amazing and we all wanted her to come and share it at the school committee. So Olivia, I'm sorry I didn't see you earlier, but, but please, great to have you here and love to hear your essay again.
So I just wanted to write an essay about my experience being a part of the PBD Public School System and the impact it's had on my life, so here it is. I've been a part of the PBD Public School System since I was a kindergartner at the Burke Elementary School. Now I'm a senior at PBD High and I can say with full certainty that I would not be the young woman I am now, if we're not for all the things that my PBD education has given me. I genuinely consider my education to be the most important aspect of my life. Education is an equalizer. It exposes students to diverse thoughts and challenges their views on the world. It opens their eyes to new topics and interests. It allows for students to grow as young people. Education sets the stage for the rest of a student's life. A quality education first and foremost stems from the individuals who are educating. A great teacher can turn a boring subject into the most fascinating topic. They can ignite passion and inspiration in students. They lift up students and offer support beyond academics. I have seen and felt first hand the impact that an amazing educator can have on a young life. PBD is so, so lucky to be filled with adults who care so deeply about the welfare of their students. They are shaping the future. The first PBD educator who had a true impact on my life was my 5th grade teacher, Mrs. Lindergan. She taught English and History, my favorite subjects both then and now. She was the first teacher to truly encourage my love of reading and writing specifically, always writing kind notes on my reading journal entries. I still remember the words she wrote in my 5th grade yearbook, "Your brain is a gift, never stop writing." It has been almost seven years since then and has stuck with me as I've grown as a young woman. PBD High especially is filled to the brim with teachers who go above and beyond what is required of them as educators. I could genuinely speak for hours about the various teachers I've interacted with over these last four years, but I only have so much time, so I will touch on a certain three. Mr. Grandin taught my AP Statistics course sophomore year. His pure enthusiasm and passion for math made me in turn love math too. I looked forward to his class every day, not just listen to him teach stats, but to listen to him teach us about life. My three best friends and I sat by his desk and he would help us with things in our lives beyond math, always looking to help us become the best young woman we could be. He told us at the end of the course that he would always be our teacher and that has remained true. I see him and smile and wave every day in the hallways, I stop by his room after school just to talk and I'm not, I could not be more excited to be a part of his class once again for my last semester of high school. Mr. Grandin has shaped my education as a PBD student. For the last two years, I have taken anatomy with Mrs. Coleman. Never I've been a part of a more warm and welcoming classroom environment than I have when I step into her room. Her compassion for her students has impacted me significantly. She'll email me when I'm out sick with hopes that I'm feeling better and she was very understanding and gentle with me after I missed school for surgery last September. Her excitement for science rubs off on us all, especially during our celebrations. Mrs. Coleman has shaped my education as a PBD student. Last school year, I took AP English with Mr. Harris and it will forever be the best class I have taken in my entire school career. My ideas were truly challenged and I felt myself grow as a critical thinker and writer under his guidance. Recreational reading was a required grade in his class. This pushed me to read more than I had in years. I rediscovered my passion for reading by witnessing Mr. Harris's passion for books every day, from the bookshelves in his room to his book talks every week. It's honestly difficult to find words to describe how much I grew as a young woman due to his class. Mr. Harris has shaped my education as a PBD student. The PBD education community has been shaken this year by the recent losses of Ms. Murtagh and Ms. Mediateus, two women who left an indelible mark on our community. Not a day goes by where I don't think about either one of them when I enter school and I know so many others feel the same way. And I want to thank Dr. Lord for being there for us through all of this, for being the common constant presence in our academic lives. You have brought something special into our school community that I have never felt before this year, so thank you. I look at my brother, a sophomore at PBD, and I see the future. I look at the younger girls in my dance team, Higgins students, and I see the future. I look at the children on the Welch School Dance Team where I volunteer and I see the future. All of these students are bright and eager to learn. It is the job of their schools and educators to keep them that way. With the improvements I see happening at PBD High, from the vision of the graduate to the hopes of a new building, and at other schools in PBD, I am hopeful that a PBD education will only grow more valuable. PBD is building a stronger future for the education of our children and is thanks to every person whose name is on the legacy wall and every person who has ever worked for the schools and who will continue to. There are so many people who have played a part in the quality of my education that I have never even met or maybe never heard of, but I am so grateful for them all. I see very bright things for the future of education in PBD. May the wall serve as a reminder of those who brought us to where we are now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. (Applause). Thank you, is that perfect for Public Schools Week?
Yes.
But Olivia, thank you again, it was tremendous and I appreciate you waiting and being here to share that with us, share your thoughts. Leap for Education, come on up here, Mary.
Can I take, can I stand?
Yep. So, yeah Linda, whatever, however you want to do it.
Yeah, I think this is better, because then, I don't like having my back to people so I can like just turn in circles, but thank you very much Mayor and School Committee members, especially to John, helping me to arrange this, and to Principal Lord who I just met for the first time, I've heard so much about you, as well as the Superintendent. My name is Linda Saris and I'm Executive Director of Leap for Education. I'm here with Kayla Dorsey who's Deputy Director and she'll be my master clicker, because sometimes I get so into the presentation I forget to click and I'm about five slides in and I'm like, oh, my goodness. I'm going to be doing a presentation that we did for the Social Innovation Forum last May, we were chosen as a social innovator among eight other great nonprofits and this was a presentation, I modified it slightly to be more specific to PBD, so let's give it a whirl. Take a leap with me and envision a world where all children can be successful in education, career and life. And to do that, I ask you to think about your own graduation day and your very first job offer, brimming with confidence and feeling very independent and your life is just filled with endless possibilities. And then I want you to think about all the people in your life, all those adults, probably your parents, teachers and perhaps you were lucky enough to have a mentor who helped you along the way. What if that didn't exist? What if instead of a future of endless possibilities, you faced a much more uncertain future? Because I really need you to understand and feel this difference, because the students that we're talking about are underserved, low-income, first-generation of college students are facing a much more uncertain future and Leap is able to change their future into one that's filled with hope and purpose, but there's a lot of work to do. Because in Massachusetts, there are 45,000 students, that's six out of 10 high school graduates who never go on to finish a degree. And that's Massachusetts, which is the number one state in the country in education. Seventy percent of jobs in this state are posted requiring a degree, they're a two or four-year degree. So it's not surprising that two out of three employers in a recent survey said they can't fill jobs. This is a social equity issue, because what this is doing is creating what we call, what you've all heard of as a skills gap, and a skills gap leads to a wage and opportunity gap, which is a social equity issue, because most of the kids we're talking about here are your underserved, low-income, students of color, immigrant students, and these are the students that Leap serves. Not only is this a social equity issue then, it's also an economic issue and, and closing these gaps is what our mission is and I would like to now talk a little bit about the actual programs we do. Learn is, as, I think it was Edson who already explained to you, Leap is an acronym for Learn, Explore, Aspire and Pursue. Through comprehensive programs, our children learn and explore through project-based learning and, and interesting academic activities. Our students get so, opportunities to grow socially and emotionally through mentoring and life skills workshops. And then they get to identify their aspirations and then put in place an education and career plan to achieve them. And finally, throughout, students are making social connections through networking and events that we hold, and this is what we call social capital. And this personalized and whole student approach to education is really what we're all about and requires all four of these elements, which are built into all our programs from 6th grade all the way through post-secondary graduation. In 2018, we changed our focus from primarily being just college, at first we were just getting kids into college and we realized that they really need to have a career goal. So they were much more intentional about their pathway. And so we created this Career Connections Initiative, which allowed students to become more aware of different career opportunities that are available to them, explore deeply those that they're interested in, or learn more about those that they've never heard of, which is often the case, and then finally immerse themselves in volunteer and job opportunities and workplace learning experiences. And with that, they can then create their pathway to a post-secondary degree, trade or credential. Salem, Leap for Education is in Salem, Gloucester, PBD and soon Lynn, and today we serve about 360 students. Once we have Lynn up and running, that number will be over 400. As you can see, most of our students are low-income, students of color, the majority of our students being Latino. In PBD, this is what the numbers look like, we have 37 juniors and seniors, as Edson had mentioned, that we serve, I think it's about 17 seniors and 20 juniors, so we have a bigger junior class. And we're tracking about 40, 39 students through post-secondary, because once they graduate PBD High School, we don't let go of them until they can show me their diploma. So we follow them and provide an advisor to help them through college. And since 2013, when we first started in PBD, we've served 118 students. Again, similar demographics, low-income, students of color, and three-quarters of them will be the first in their families to go to college. And below, I just pulled some of the stats off of the DESI website for the high school demographics. So you can see our numbers are significant, significantly higher than the, than the school's numbers. The College Success Program is a very personalized approach to college, college access services. It's not just throwing everybody into a group and marching them all in the same direction. We really try and personalize it, we meet private, you know, one-on-one with each student to understand what their career path, what their interest is, and make sure their school they're going to is one that meets their, their goals and aspirations. The kids have to make a really big commitment in time, they're meeting every week, about 140 hours, they're doing self-exploration, career exploration, they go on college tours, write their personal essays, do their resumes. As seniors, they meet twice a week, once in a group, once one-on-one with their advisor so they can start getting scholarship applications and financial aid, applications and all their essays written. And then once, as I said, in college, they get signed a Leap Advisor who then follows them and advises them one-on-one. For most of our students, it's done by phone or by FaceTime. For students who are commuting and live in the area, they sometimes come in and do their one-on-ones in person. And when needed, we'll help them transfer. So all of our community college students will help them get into a four-year college. If they're not happy in their college, we help them transfer. This is some of the colleges that are, that the PBD Leap students are currently in and I just note here that, I don't know if you remember, Priscilla Portia got a full boat Questford Scholarship to Colby and we have two students who got a posse full scholarship to Union College. The majority of our students are in the State and UMass system. So what are our outcomes? Last several years, I always hesitate to put 100% because no one ever believes 100%, but truly 100% of our students did enroll in college. Now, the, the PBD High School one, again, I pulled off the DESI website and this is just for the students who are low-income. So these are the, this is not the stat for the whole school, just for that demographic. And right now, we measure persistence rate, which is students who have finished successfully their sophomore year and now into their junior year. The statistics show if they make it that far, they're probably going to make it all the way. And again, our numbers are more than double what the numbers are for the high school. So these, this is the DART data that's on the DESI website if anybody wants to go, go take a look at it. We've only, just, we only have had two years. The graduation rate in our Salem program, which has been going longer, is about 75%, which is triple the rate for Salem High School. Okay, now we can go. So today, as I said, we serve Salem, PBD, Gloucester, and soon Lynn. There are about 6,000 students that's in our demographic, which is economically disadvantaged middle and high school youth. And we're serving today less than 10% of that, about 7.5%. I think there's a lot of opportunity to grow. I do want to offer my condolences on the passing of Superintendent Murtagh. I had just met with her two weeks before she passed for the first time. She was so high-energy, she was so excited because she wanted to learn more about the college program. She set up an appointment to come meet the kids. She said, "I want a program here at Higgins," and now that I'm in this school, this is a beautiful school. And it didn't happen, so I'm hoping that we can continue those conversations that she wanted to have as we continue because we'd love to do more here in PBD. So, as a case study, sometimes, excuse me, it helps to put a face on it. And I know Andrew knows Manny. Manny Cruz is currently on the School Committee in Salem. He first came to LEAP when he was in sixth grade, totally disengaged student in the principal's office all the time. He took a typical nonlinear path and really hit rock bottom in ninth grade. We did everything we could to try and pull him back in. We usually try and find a hook for a student, something that interests him. I tried to get him involved in computers. I figured every kid can get hooked in computers. He was totally not interested. It wasn't until the 2008 Obama election that we found, we realized he had a passion for politics, public policy, and social justice. So we recommended him to be on Governor Patris Youth Council. He joined that as a senior in high school and when he went off to Salem State, became the chairman of it. And then we helped him with a lot of hard work on his part. We helped him transfer to Northeastern because he wanted to participate in that nice co-op program that they have there. And then he graduated there in 20...oh, God, was it 2018? And currently, he is, as I mentioned, oh, I forgot, he also did a very prestigious internship at the federal district court, which we had opened the door for him, but he got it all on his own. He worked really hard on that, so that was pretty exciting. He is now Legislative aide. I think some of you might know him, to Paul Tucker, who's the rep from Salem. He was elected on his first try to Salem School Committee and just joined a couple summers ago, the LEAP Board of Directors, so now he's actually my boss. So, everything's coming home to roost now. So as I say, you know, we've seen him since sixth grade all the way through into his career. Those are services we provide in Salem. We'd love to do more work here in PBD as well. So, just a little bit, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. I do want to do a shout-out to Senator Lovely because she was amazing in getting us some funding in DESI to help, and the money that we got is to fund PBD and also Salem. And last year, we went over $1 million, which was, I mean, we've been doing this since 2002, so it took us 18 years to get to $1 million, but we're finally there. And, you know, with support from Senator Lovely and a lot of private foundations, we've been able to grow. So with that, I'm done. I hope I didn't take too much time. I want to thank everybody and hope we can do more great things here in PBD. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. That was tremendous. And there's no objection, I'd like to go a little bit out of order. I'd like to go, I know we have some representatives from the PBD Federation of Teachers, Teachers Union, Mary Henry, I wanted to, there's no objection, I'd like to turn it over to you or whoever. Yep? Just come on up. Please introduce yourself and whenever you're ready.
Okay. Well, my name is Christina McGregor. I am a resident of PBD. I teach at the Center School. I've taught there for the past 30 years, and I'm also a PFT building representative at the Center School, along with Michelle Hughes in my building as well. And, thank you. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for all of your hard work and dedication on behalf of the students of PBD Public Schools. And I'd like to give a special thank you to the mayor and to also Mrs. Henry for attending Center School building meeting this afternoon and just listening to us about our issues that we're dealing with there. And also, a special shout-out to Mrs. Dunn for her remark last school committee meeting, kind of giving us a shout-out for being a very powerful voice for education. And it's to that end that I'm here tonight. I just would like to tell you a little bit about the PFT and who we are. I think there might be some preconceptions or misconceptions about, you know, what we do and why we are who we are. But we are a group of very hard-working, dedicated, skillful professionals that work together every day on behalf of the students of PBD Public Schools. We effectively advocate for children and for education, and we, in fact, helped secure the $1.2 million that was part of the Student Opportunity Act that will be up for a stakeholders' meeting very soon. And we worked hard making phone calls, attending meetings, attending forums and rallies to help secure that money. As a matter of fact, many people in this room were on a bus. We worked a full day of school, and after school, we took a school bus to Boston and we marched on Boston on a kind of a cold, dreary day around the State House and chanted and all kinds of things, trying to advocate to get the funding formula changed. And it, in fact, did get changed, and that's why we have that money today. We also attended a rally with some other political figures, trying to secure votes so that when the time came that they would vote for that to be passed through. And that was at a church that was right across from the Governor's House as well. We do many other things. We brought to you tonight Public Schools Week, tried to bring attention to that. We wear red for ed on many occasions to call attention to things that might come up and post pictures on Facebook and things like that. We provided over 50,000 books in conjunction with the Salem Teachers Union during the spring of last year with the first book program. And many of us, on nights after school and many weekends, unpacked 40 gigantic pallets full of hardcover books that we couldn't even reach to the bottom. We had to rip open to get to the bottom and set many, many books up. It was very grueling work, but it was very rewarding to have the children come and get every book for them was free. And so we had many communities attending, not just students from PBD. Got a little out of control, but it was well worth it. And just to see everybody happy and teachers got some books for their classrooms as well for that initiative. We provide two scholarships for students, two scholarship opportunities for students. We participate in city events such as the Nightmare on Elm Street. There were a lot of us that showed up and dressed up with witches' hats and things and passed out candy to the children and had a good time with that. We attend the Holiday Stroll and pass out candy canes to the students. We've attended the cancer walks in the past at the high school, which unfortunately are no longer taking place. We attend the citywide cleanup in various spots around the city, and we've made a substantial donation to the PBD Education Foundation in Kara Murtagh's name as well. So, in the future, we hope to be present for the International Festival in the fall. There's talk of that. And we care. We show up, we fight for our students, for what they need in our classrooms and beyond every day. We want to create a positive, productive collaboration between labor and management, and we want to be partners, not opponents. We hope to be invited to collaborate with you in the stakeholders' meetings that are moving forward in the future, so that we can be the example we want our students to follow, and that's to be cooperative team players that work together for the common good. And that's who the PFT is. So I thank you for your time. I don't want to take up any more of it. I know you have more things to discuss ahead of you. So again, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Thank all of you for being here today, and thank you for all your work you do for us and our kids. And we do have another special guest, and I wanted to go out of order. There's no objection. I'd like to go to Dr. Kerbel, the Superintendent's Report, the first item on the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kerbel, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep, thank you. And if the teachers could just wait just another minute, because I would like you to hear this. We've been trying to highlight the high school for the past several meetings, and so I want to introduce a former high school student, Attorney Mackenzie Mahoney, to come to the microphone and give her a testimonial in terms of her experience at the high school.
Hi. Hello.
Welcome.
Fellow class of 2012, Andrew Arnotis. Happy to see you.
Good to see you.
So, my name is Mackenzie Mahoney. I graduated from PBD High in the class of 2012. I went to the West Memorial School before that and the old Higgins in between. So I start first by, I have a letter from my first-grade teacher, Mrs. Covino, at the West School, that my mom found because she saves everything. We recently moved out of our house in PBD, so going through it, through all the homework that she had saved over the years, I found this letter from Mrs. Covino, where she talks about how, you know, I'm a really shy person and that I get really enthusiastic in class and somehow I needed to learn how to raise my hand a little more because the words just leapt from my mouth. And so thankfully, in today's day and age, we can friend our old teachers on Facebook. And so I got to post this picture of this letter and tell Mrs. Covino that I happily found a career that let the words just fly from my mouth on purpose. So, listening to the essay that was read earlier, I couldn't help but see mirrors to my own high school experience and the teachers that really helped mold it. Being an attorney now, which is still a really weird thing for me to say, it's very fresh. I'm a baby attorney, as they say. I get asked a lot of times, you know, "What made you do it? What made you decide to be a lawyer?" And I go back to Mrs. Gore at PBD High School every single time. I entered PBD High saying, "I want to do the mock trial class. That's, I'm going to create my schedule so that I can do mock trial." And, you know, Andrew and I were judges of what they call the hysterical trial our senior year, where it's basically two classes of 30 kids just going at it for three days straight, and it's so much fun. And I'm just so happy that I went to a school where I was able to have all those different experiences, that I was able to take three years of clothing design and construction and take hairdressing if I wanted to and try all these different careers and find the one that fit right for me. And it just so happened that, you know, mock trial was the fit. And listening to the Student Advisory Committee come up here, there are so many extracurriculars that we got to do. And being a student at PBD High School, I was able to be in a nurturing environment that allowed me to try all of the extracurriculars, you know, be on the cheerleading team, be on the track team, do student government, do the student council, and still be able to keep up with AP classes. And talking about the losses that PBD High has as well, I mean, they stick with us even after we've left. I mean, I can say when Ms. Bertram passed two years ago, the amount of kids that all kind of came together in a group chat and were just, "Oh, my God," and just the memories that we've all kept. In the very last edition of the student newspaper that they do, they do a couple, like, you know, "Where will everybody be in 10 years?" And they had a couple of student essays. And I will say that Andrew Arnotis was that in the future, he would be our staunchly Democratic President of the United States one day. And we've always joked about being running mates together eventually. But I wrote an essay for that, and it was called Tanner for Life, and I still think that's true, that, you know, my parents have moved away, I've gone off to college and law school and lived somewhere else, but there's just something about PBD that always brings us back. And a lot of times, it's centered around the high school and it's centered around our experiences there, whether they were, you know, in the lockers. I can still remember where Ms. Henry's class was in A-House on the third floor. It's just those little things stick with you, and it's because of the teachers and the staff and the people that make it that environment. So, go public schools. We're all very happy for them. Thank you.
I really don't want to go any further. Mackenzie, thank you for being here. Congratulations on being an attorney. That is a tremendous accomplishment, and I wish you all the best. I know we all do, wish you all the best. And congratulations to your family. That's terrific. And you're always welcome back in PBD. That's your home, always. Great. All right, back to the agenda. Let's see, approval of minutes. February 11, 2020, we have our regular school committee meeting minutes to be approved.
Motion to approve.
Heard the motion by Mr. Arnotis for approval of those February 11, 2020, regular school committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call, on the motion. Mrs. Dunn.
One correction. It's on page 17, second to last paragraph. The question was around the change of the stock, not state.
That will be, that change will be made. And any other motions? Roll call, vote please on the motion.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. Next is approval of bills. We have two warrants.
I'd like to make a motion for warrant A, number 4422, in the amount of $357,597.08, subject to audit.
Heard the motion by Mr. Olympio for approval of warrant A, number 4422, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
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 Like to make a motion for warrant B, number 4424, in the amount of $875,030.72, subject to audit.
You've heard the motion for approval of warrant B, number 4424, motion made by Mr. Olympio, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, Mr. Olympio. Next item, continued business. Mrs. Dunn, any update on MSBA Higgins Project you wanted to share?
We're still in the closeout process.
All set. Next item, fiscal year 2020 budget updates. Anything new to report?
Actually, this week, I would just like to say, if Mr. Scanlon wanted to bring anything forward, feel free. Otherwise, I have no questions this week.
Yeah, we're still monitoring the budget. We've taken a cautionary step of freezing discretionary accounts. What that means is, doesn't mean the schools and the departments can't spend that money, they just can't spend it right now. So hopefully, as we continue to monitor the budget in the coming months, we'll be able to release those funds.
Thank you.
Okay. Welch School MSBA project update, Mrs. Dunn.
The sub-board of the Welch School Building Committee is conducting interviews tomorrow with the three top candidates for the OPM position. After those interviews are completed, the board will then make a decision on the preferred candidate, and then that information will be submitted to the MSBA, and they will determine whether we will be hiring that OPM candidate at their April 9 meeting. So we are on a deadline for next Tuesday to submit our final decision to MSBA, and then they will hear it and decide. then they will hear it and decide in April.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Next item, continued business is the Emerson Park bus routes. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I was going to suggest, I mean, is this an item that maybe we could put into a committee, or I'll leave it to you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I had the same thought. Before we do that, though, we do have a few communications that we have tonight that were not in the packet, so I'd like to make a motion to receive those, just so that we can include them in our record.
Great. So we have a communication from Captain Richards of the Peabody Police Department, and Lisa Connors, the Director of Transportation of Peabody Public Schools. Motion made to receive those by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? And yeah, that was just my suggestion. I just felt this was an issue that...
I agree, because there seemed to be a lot of stakeholders who were, really need to be involved in the conversation, so I think we'd be better served with having, or asking the superintendent, Dr. Kerbel, if he would be able to coordinate a meeting between the various authors of these emails and school committee members who are interested in participating, director of transportation, I would suspect, police, fire, people who are involved in this environment. So I'd like to just, I don't know if you want to do it in the form of a motion, or just direct, ask the superintendent to schedule that.
Dr. Kerbel, is that okay to go ahead and schedule? Okay. Why don't we just do that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. And then we also, let's hold the memorial scholarship in honor of Kara Mertag to our next meeting. And the last item on continued business is open enrollment. Mrs. Dunn, turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is on because it, the open enrollment is a very timely issue right now. Parents are nervous about our intention on continuing the program. It was put on hold, the application process was put on hold because of difficulties we were experiencing with the submission of applications. And at the time that this was put on hold, back in the fall, we were going to speak about it this spring, and just seems like it's time to do that. So I know that we have, we have a document here with open enrollment seats available, and I'd like to make a motion to receive this document.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico, to receive the open enrollment document that's been presented today. All in favor? That's a vote.
Okay. And actually, I'd be happy to turn this over to Dr. Kerbel if there are any, you know, for further information. This is a topic that may not be decided tonight, but that at least we just do need to open the door to the discussion so that we can come to a resolution.
Yep, I agree. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Before we go to Dr. Kerbel, like, Mr. Amico, did you have a comment?
Sure, thank you, through the chair. I asked for minutes about our open enrollment meetings in the past, so I just want to make sure that we have a motion to receive these as well.
Okay. Yep, we have the motion by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mr. Arnotis, to receive those minutes. Everybody has a copy? Okay, thank you. Mr. Amico, anything further?
Sure. Also on the open enrollment, thank you, Ms. Dunn, for bringing this to our attention. As we know, it is a timely issue, and I have been receiving a lot of emails, and I think we all have. And there are a lot of parents, grandparents involved here, where students live in one part of the city and want to go to school in another part, and sometimes it's because of transportation issues, sometimes it's because parents are working. And I know, just yesterday alone, I fielded two calls in regards to that, where parents are just very, very nervous about this, and had asked that we bring this to the attention of the school committee. And I do see that we have open enrollment seats available here, and I thank you, through the chair, to the central office, Dr. Kerbel, for bringing this out to us. The only thing that I have to say in regards to this here is that not only are there open enrollment seats available, but if we did not open up our enrollment, or open the process again, and we kept it as is, we would have to bring back all of those students back to their school of origin. And that would be the Welch, the Center, the Carroll, could be the Brown. And so you have 10, 15, 20, 30 students coming back to those schools, and I don't think we would be able to take those students back. We have to, obviously, but we would have to make adjustments, whether it's contractually to hire teachers, because if it's a second grader hypothetically, and it's, and they're the number, I think it's the number 24th student, we would have to, by contract, hire another, or have another classroom available. So what I'm asking this evening is that we take, we're going to have to take this up in the near future. I'm asking that we just take it up tonight and just open up the process for open enrollment, or the application process, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mr. Arnotis, then Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. I will second the motion if that is in the form of a motion. And I do also want to thank the folks who have reached out. I know this is a very personal issue, and I think Mr. Amico hit the nail on the head here, that we need to think about the long-term effects if we were to go back. So I'm completely comfortable with opening the process as well, and I look forward to hearing what my members, other members have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Arnotis. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Amico, Ms. Dunn, for bringing this forward, and Mr. Arnotis for giving us the opportunity to speak. I was excited at our last meeting because we, this is my 11th year serving on this board, and I'm proud to do it, happy to do it. And in our agenda last week, we actually had a agenda item for redistricting. And, you know, I, we received the minutes from the April 23, 2019 meeting tonight. I haven't had an opportunity to review them, but I can, I suspect that I spoke about, one of the reasons to hold off on open enrollment was so that we can have an opportunity to look at students that are organically within the boundaries that we establish, that are artificial and able to be moved, to have some equity within the school district in terms of class size and things like that. That being said, you know, we've had a tremendous amount of loss this school year that has kind of curtailed some of our opportunities to go through some of the items that I had hoped that we would get to by this point. And I was hoping that we would have gone through redistricting, or at least meetings and developing a plan by this point, and we haven't for obvious reasons. So I'm not opposed to open enrollment. I've never been opposed to open enrollment. I think Mr. Amico makes extremely valid points in that it does assist families, it assists schools, it does sort of work in times towards that equity piece. I do have some concerns about, you know, every, everything good has, or at least most things good, have some negative unintended consequences, and I do have concerns about some of the schools that have high minority populations and high low-income populations, where there are some students who, or some families that choose to send their kids to other elementary schools due to that, and that bothers me. But I do understand that there are valid reasons, mostly valid reasons, for people making the choice to send their children to a different school. That being said, I do plan on supporting Mr. Amico's motion. I would like to bring open, excuse me, redistricting back. I know it's not on the agenda tonight, so I'm not asking for it to be discussed tonight, but I do want to bring it back perhaps at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman, and I, and I will bring that back. Yeah, I think we got, yeah, we got, yeah, our efforts were put on hold, as you said, for obvious reasons, but I would like to get that back as well. Thank you for that. Mr. Olympio?
Through the chair, I'll certainly support Mr. Amico's motion. I'm in agreement with that. You know, there's, dynamics have changed today, and I've, you know, a bunch of parents have reached out to me as well. There's a lot of grandparents that live on one side of the city, and then you have the parents on the other side of the city. They both work, they're single parents, and just the whole dynamic of, you know, the household has changed, where it's a convenience issue, where they need to get kids at a certain place. Grandparents are getting kids off the buses on the other side of the city. So I just think at this point that it would be appropriate to open up the process. Just be a lot of hardship, I think, on families at this point. And, you know, of course, we're going to look at the redistricting down the road, but at least that, for the time being, I'd be in support of open enrollment again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honestly, I don't think the problem has been with the open enrollment program. I think the problem has been with the application process. That's where the troubles seem to arise this year. This has always been a program that was designed to work for both parties, for the parents who were seeking to have their child attend a different school for various reasons, but also on our end, that if we had the space, that we would be able to allow students to attend another school. If we didn't have the space, students could not transfer into the other school. That has never changed. It has always been left to the discretion of the superintendent based on staffing and class sizes, and it has worked very well, with the exception of the application program, uh, process. And one of the suggestions that, that I would like to make is, the way the original process operated was that there was a first come, first serve basis for application approval. So everyone was very intent on getting their application time and date stamped. It got to the point this year where people were bringing in the applications the day after school ended. And there had always been a, an understanding, and I think it was written in the application, that there was never a guarantee that a student could go to the school of their choice for anything more than one year. This was on a year-to-year basis, and sometimes that has had to change, where someone may not have been able to go to the school that they chose because people who lived in that district had priority on the seats in those classes. Unfortunately, this year, and I am, I am reporting to you what, what I understood from our staff, I did, I spoke with our secretaries and with Ms. Mertag about this. This year, people created their own application and submitted it before our application was prepared and ready for submission. People put in information that was incorrect in applications. The telephone calls and outright abuse that the staff suffered from parents who were angry at the process was over the top, completely uncalled for. And that was why I had brought that motion forward, to ask that we hold off on our process. One thing I would like to suggest is that we have a time definite for applications, perhaps a three- or four-week period, where the application would go up online, or people could get it from the office. They would submit it, and they would turn it in during a time definite, whatever works for the staff, because I don't know their workload. I really and truly think we have to look at what they face, because my understanding was last year there were 355 applications. It's a lot, it's a lot to look into, it's a lot of planning, there are a lot of things that have to be looked at. It has always been stated, and it cannot be stated enough, that this program is not a guarantee. Everyone in Peabody who sends their child to our school system is guaranteed a seat in their neighborhood school, but the matter of convenience is not guaranteed. And no matter how often that is stressed, this year was, it was very difficult for our staff to speak up. I can guarantee you, we've never heard peep out of them about this. This was a really, really bad year. So I think that limiting the timeframe of when applications are available and when they are submitted, the fact that people were trying to, you know, first come, first serve, I think we need to take that requirement away. Just look at all of the applications after they have been received to determine what's best for the school district as far as equity and classroom size. And then once that decision is made, to explain to people that this is our decision, it was made with a lot of thought, they have to understand there is a lot of thought that goes into the placement of these students, but that the, the angry letters, the hundreds of phone calls, it, it had to stop. Our staff could not deal with that. They have a lot of other things that they have to deal with as well. So I think that if we have a component where people are allowed to submit a letter with their application, perhaps discussing their specific request, that's another suggestion. I don't know if the committee wants to do that or not. But I think that we have to have tighter control on the application process, and that way our staff can deal with these requests.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Dr. Kerbel, did you want to weigh in?
Sure. So you all make, you all make good points, all of you. And so, so just personally, I've always, I've always believed in the neighborhood schools. I've always felt that way. John brings up some really good points, that in today's household, it has changed. You know, I, you know, my sister helps my nephew, though she goes to the house, so I can, I know how challenging it can be, especially if two parents work, so I'm sensitive to that. Beverly, your, your whole explanation about the application process makes so much sense. I'm not minimizing anything that any of the other members have said. So the only thing I could, I will say is that it's, it is a process, and if people jump, I mean, I got letters and everything else, we just said, good thing I have a great administrative assistant that says, no, we follow the rules. And so I like your explanation about having a time period, three to four weeks, or whatever the time period is, okay? And then do a fairly, not first come, first serve, okay? But I think look at all of the applications. So we're going to have to be thoughtful about it. Other than that, I'll support whatever decision that you make. And all of you, all of your comments have been very thoughtful.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Kerbel. Dr. Lo, do you want to weigh in as well?
I just wanted to think that perhaps the community might perceive this process as like a high school student applying to college. You might not get into all of your colleges.
That's a really good...
It's a helpful analogy. I know they're younger students, but just think of it in that way. It might, might help relieve the blow if they don't get their choice.
Thank you. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you. We do have a motion on the floor, which I think we should take a vote on. However, subsequent to that, I do really like many of the comments Ms. Dunn has made, and think that we can approve open enrollment tonight, and then maybe put the application process either through Ms. Dunn's subcommittee on Policy and Quality and Standards, or ask the administration to develop an application that we can review at a later time in terms of how to implement open enrollment.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mrs. Dunn?
I'll be honest, I will work with the administration on anything, never a problem, but I really do think that on this one, we have to go by what works for the administration office, and be glad to help with any input on, you know, we've, we've got a lot written down on it already about the parameters of this, and, you know, siblings, and all the considerations that educators always make about students, of what's best for a student and what's best for a student's family. I really don't think we have to change any of those. I just think that it's the timeframe and the paper, the actual application and paperwork. And I think that after we take a vote on continuing open enrollment, that I would just be happy to say that if, if Dr. Kerbel and his staff could sit down and look at that, come back to us with a calendar, when they would like to do this, what timeframe they would like to look at, and what type of information might help them. I'm good with that.
Great. Thank you. And just to add my thoughts to it, I, I'm supportive of open enrollment, as long as there's seats available at those classes. I think we're all in agreement on that. I am not in favor of school choice and would strongly advocate against school choice, except in situations of siblings that we've already allowed in, and in children of teachers and employees. But I think we, open enrollment, I think, can really work and help families and help a number of our residents, but school choice is something that I strongly believe in. I just want, I know we're not having that discussion, but these two often come together for our discussion, and I wanted to make my thoughts very clear on that. The open enrollment... The open enrollment, I see where it helps. School choice is something I feel different about. Mr. Miko, did you have a comment?
Well, I wanted to take the vote on the motion, but then I had something on.
Can you repeat your motion, please?
Basically, to make a motion to open up the application process for open enrollment.
Okay. And second of it, you've heard the motion by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mr. Arnotis on the motion, Mrs. Dunn? I see that look.
Ms., Mr. Olympia had a question.
I just wanted to clarify one thing.
So, just for the public, school choice are students that are out of district. That seems to be a lot of confusion.
Yeah, I, I should, open enrollment is for students within the city of Peabody, potentially moving to a different school, depending on enrollment in that school they'd like to move to. School choice would be students from other cities that we were allowed to come here to the city of Peabody.
Okay.
I want to make sure, thank you, I want to make, I should make that clear every time, because there is an important distinction, but the two of them, those two issues are often brought up simultaneously or together. Mrs. Dunn, back to you.
Now I'll explain, I'll explain the face. I was wondering if we, if you might consider amending your motion to make it that we will vote to continue the open enrollment program for the 2021 school year. That might be clearer, so that people know, yes, the program will be in existence next year, we're just gonna work out the details.
Amended, sure, thank you.
Okay, so that amendment has been made, I don't think we need to vote on that. That amendment's been made. You got that one yet? Okay. All right, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, Mr. Miko, I'll go back to you.
Through the chair of the committee, and through the chair of central office, our business manager, in, in working on the budget, could you work, could you give us numbers in addition to regular numbers, but without school choice, the net difference there, in case we vote against having school choice continued in the future?
Well, the numbers are in the favor of the district in terms of receiving versus sending. Both numbers did go down this year, I'm just gonna state what I remember approximately. I think the receiving is under half million, say 475, and then the sending number is like 375. So the difference is maybe, you know, in the range of 60, 65,000, that's on the town side for those two numbers. There's been a dramatic drop-off from prior years, but some of it has to do with graduation of seniors, because there's no replenishment of new students coming in through the lower grades.
Thank you, through the chair. And the reason why I ask is I, I'm also in favor of eliminating school choice, and we can take that up at a, at a different, different meeting, but I wanted to know what the, what the numbers would be if we eliminated, what would be the difference? So thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, I think we should probably put that item on a future agenda. We don't have that item on, we probably shouldn't discuss it until the, until a meeting we do. No, that was my fault, I brought it up. Go to Mr. Hockman, and then.
To that, to that end, I think we have a statutory obligation to have a vote on school, school choice by April 30th.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, open enrollment, we're moving forward, we'll get some information from Dr. Kerbel and his team, we'll put on school choice for a future meeting. Okay? All right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just give a piece of information to everyone? The school choice, the, I'm sorry, now I'm mixing up the terms. The open enrollment numbers actually became very pertinent in our work on the Welch School Statement of Interest, and it was, it was a very, very big issue in, in dealing with that. So it is something that affects the schools with the numbers of students going to the other elementary schools, too. Something to keep in mind.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to the agenda, public participation. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? The opportunity is now available. Please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Baker, 13 Sunset Drive, Peabody. Last school committee meeting. And I wanted to comment on that meeting. I realized that I did not include a copy of the record as an attachment to the meeting minutes, therefore, I'm gonna provide you with a copy of today's communication, February 11th communication, and the Peabody Patch article, and the email sent to all school committee meeting members. This can be included as an attachment in your next committee meeting minutes for the public record. I'm sure you're aware by now that I like to address quotes from people, and I'd like to address the quotes that were made at the last meeting. The comment made by Dr. Kerbel apologizing to me, not so much my daughter, for feeling any anguish or being uncomfortable is absolutely patronizing and insulting to the students. Apologies should be made to every student in the classroom that day. Every one of those children's, children were guilty until proven innocent. Every one of those children had their rights violated on a snap decision on the word of someone who may or may not have had something stolen. Were the teachers searched, just as a curiosity, as my daughter was asked to be a witness for one of the teachers while searching? As far as no comment to press Dr. Kerbel, you felt obligated to state erroneous comments to Peabody Patch, justifying something you were not even witness to. But you will not publicly apologize to these children in a forum other than the school committee meeting. You stated you don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable, and yet you don't want to recognize these children's rights being violated. This is not only a personal, personnel issue, it involved private citizens. I want to formally request the fall and be provided according to the Freedom of Information Act. Dr. Kerbel stated that he would not say much about the Higgins Middle School incident, and I want to know if that's because there was an ongoing investigation? And if so, what parties and what measures were taken to investigate? I would also like to formally request a copy of the full investigative report done by the Human Resource Director, as Dr. Kerbel stated. Since Dr. Kerbel stated there were lessons learned, I would also like to request a written copy of what lessons were learned. This should justify his view on why he assumes that the laws were followed and not in violation of the children's Fourth Amendment rights guaranteed by the Constitution and reinforced by the Supreme Court ruling of New Jersey v. TOL. Was it deemed lawful for a police officer to question a minor without a guardian present? Why was the video of the school committee made private and taken down from public view? The report, if truly fully investigated, should contain the following information: How was it determined that the search was reasonable based on the objective of the search? How did the school committee policy justify reasonable suspicion? How was any effort made to narrow down the scope of who was searched? I hope you will have the respect to respond, as I was told at last meeting that I would receive a written response, and 10 days later, I still have not received one. If you'd like, you can send both responses, and I've provided my address with all of my information. And I just want to point out that one of the former speakers in here had a teacher wearing a Red for Ed shirt, and on the back of it, it said, "Teach, Lead, Inspire, Hope, Advocate, Agitate, and Organize." And I think that's something that should be maybe addressed in this situation. I've had, again, I've had no response back from anybody. This is a public forum, that's wonderful, but there's no feedback. And there should be, by now, there should have been something, I mean, 10 calendar, it's past 10 calendar days, actually. And I've had no response, and I was told I would have one. So that's all I have to say, and hoping that I'll have the respect of getting a response this time on what actually happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go back to the superintendent's report, and Dr. Kerbel, turn it over to you.
Before we go forward, Mr. Mayor, if we can just make a motion to receive documents that are being presented.
Okay, yeah, good idea. So the documents that were just presented to us?
Yeah.
Motion to receive by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman, all in favor to receive those? Okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Kerbel, for the continuation on your superintendent's report, please.
Sure. I'm gonna go to the second part of the superintendent's report. So I'm gonna talk about the Student Opportunity Act. There's a public forum, March 10th, from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock. So what I will do is, I, I will invite the public, and let, just let me know if, if any of you have any comments to make or any ideas. The way this is going to be situated will be here, we'll start at 6:00 o'clock, finish up before 7:00. Hopefully, the, the microphone, everything will be working. I'll use the overhead projector, a lot of the sheets out here, all the people that were here today, all the teachers and parents, we'll invite them, and all the different subgroups, I will invite as well, okay? Actually, I can do it tomorrow, I'm ready.
Okay, great.
I'm fired up, I'm ready to do it. Field trip, I'd like you to approve a high school varsity baseball's trip. These are baseball students to Cape Cod. It's in your packet. Do you want to read that?
Yep, everybody has that request. Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve.
Heard the motion by Mr. Arnotis to approve the field trip request, seconded by Mr. Miko. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I would like the school committee to accept $500 to the Caring and Healing Committee from J E O L, USA Inc., with gratitude.
Motion accepted with gratitude.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympia, all in favor of receipt of said donation and a letter of thanks to J E O L, USA.
Appreciate that, very much so. A caring and healing committee is working very hard. I, I love all these people, the subcommittees were terrific. We have a February 28 pizza day for the high school and middle school. We just can't pull off eight other schools, so we're going to periodically time that out, and over the next couple of weeks. And I appreciate all the work, and also, all the people who have contributed to make Pizza Day a success, especially all the vendors and all the sponsors. I appreciate that, and so I want to thank you very much. And finally, to Mrs. Baker, and this is why I've held off so long to say anything, because my words are used against me, which is unfair. I care about everybody, I care about your daughter, and I apologize to your daughter. I care about anybody who got through any angst. In terms of the investigation and what was done, personnel matter, won't make any comments. So thank you. That's it for my superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kerbel. No. All right, we, we do not have any written communications today, we'll go to Subcommittee Reports, Education, Mr. Hockman, anything to report?
I guess tangentially, I didn't have a Subcommittee meeting, but I just want to report that I did meet with Mr. Hyatt up at the high school, and I'm working with, in a few different endeavors, one through the Peabody Ed Foundation, one through the Parks and Rec Department, but to better utilize or increase the utilization of the planetarium at the high school, and there are some things in the works there, and I'll schedule a Subcommittee meeting probably on that subject in the near future.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Hockman. Finance, we will hold that one. School safety?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you, Ms. Olympia. Athletics and wellness, Mr. Hockman?
Nothing at this time.
Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn? Oh, sorry, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two things for quality and standards. One, just so that the members understand, you all received, I, I think you all received the MASC policy newsletter that came out last week. This lists all of the policies that have been updated, and the Quality and Standards Subcommittee is going to go through and make sure that those are updated in our manual. Going to be working with Mrs. Macarelli. Again, we're trying to update the entire manual, so these are very targeted because of the recent amendments and changes in them. If there are any that are significant, we would bring them forward to the committee, but most of it is updated language that's required. The second one was on the, under the Quality and Standards. I did speak with Mrs. Coppenter regarding the scholarship, and I spoke with her about some of the parameters around the previous scholarship, and we were going to work on that language, and I, I actually thought that might be something that we could bring forward in the Subcommittee, and then bring it to the full committee for committee approval.
Great.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to refer the scholarship parameters to the Quality and Standards for a report out, so moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I also wanted to ask, at this point, maybe this would be the time to bring it up. I know at the last meeting, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I know there was a discussion regarding the EpiPen policy.
Yes.
And I wanted to ask, I, I thought that that might be an issue that we should put into Quality and Standards, or Athletics and Wellness Committee for discussion, where we can have Sharon Cameron, the Health Director, we could have Brenda Wolf, our Nursing Director, come as well, and maybe in the Subcommittee meeting, kind of work on that policy, and then bring it back to the full committee. Wanted to ask if that was agreeable to the school committee, and I'm not sure if it's appropriate, what, if it's Quality and Standards or Athletics and Wellness, but I thought those would be the two, and I maybe take some direction from the committee members as to your thoughts, but I, I was thinking it might be more effective to have in Subcommittee, and then bring it out to the full committee.
It might be a topic best for Athletic and Wellness, and then get referred to Quality and Standards for the final policy, because I think, actually, I think that may be how it was done in the past.
Okay. Yeah, it's an important topic, an important issue, and I just thought that might be the more effective way to do it. So, Mr. Hockman, would that be something we could put into your committee?
Yeah, let's vote on the motion on the floor, and then we can make a motion to put it into my committee.
Sorry, I was jumping the gun. So we do have the motion that was made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia, all in favor of that motion. And then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to put the EpiPen matter in the Quality, excuse me, in the Health and Wellness Committee. And I'll schedule a meeting after I consult with the other members of the committee, and the people who I think we're gonna need to have.
Yeah, we, there's a number of people.
Couple of stakeholders.
One, we want to represent, it's just that I think a topic where we bring the group together, talk it through in a Subcommittee format, I think would be effective. Thank you for the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympia, all in favor of that motion, terrific. We'll go to Parent and Student Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report tonight.
Building and Grounds, Mr. Miko?
Nothing to report.
Special Education, Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympia?
Yes, I just want to thank Dr. Kerbel for pinch hitting for me on February 12th. I had a personal matter that came up at the last minute, and I'll be scheduling another meeting sometime out later in March. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Council, Legislative Delegation?
Nothing new to report, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we do have a couple items under new business. First one is the summer food program. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier in this meeting, I talked about redistricting and being on this committee for 11 years. The summer food program is another thing that I've always felt the school department should own, and it doesn't, since I've been on the school committee, we haven't owned it. It is either, it used to be run by the Library Department when, when Ms. Holden was the director of the library, and then it's been, it's now run through Corey Jackson, Citizens Inn, and Haven from Hunger. At the library is the location for the food delivery or drop-off. But I, I truly believe that feeding student, the student age population is our responsibility and part of our charge. There are a lot of regulations and limitations within this program, but I, but I think in, I have spoken to Mr. Jackson about this, and I just wanted to bring this back on the floor so that we could talk about it, and maybe with the help of you, Mr. Mayor, in coordinating with, maybe Mr. Jackson and the library staff, we could start talking about taking this program on. I think that some of the limitations deal with what buildings are permitted to, how's this program because of federal funding that's associated with it? And one building that does qualify is the Welch, but we're also talking about a renovation or, or a project at the Welch which could impact the, where we don't want students in the summer, or this summer. But I just want to bring the conversation back to the front burner so that we can start working on this, whether it be, it's probably too late to consider it for the summer of 2020, but perhaps working towards the summer of 2021 and beyond.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Any comments on that, Mrs. Dunn?
I would just like to ask if we could pull up the, any of the minutes in the past from the schools regarding the summer, the summer lunch program. If I'm, if I'm correct, my, if, if my memory is correct, the reason that the library if, if my memory is correct, the reason that the library actually took it over as the location was because the school department could not take care of it through our budget, because we would have to increase the, the custodial staff through, through the summer with a dedicated lunchtime. And over the years, of course, the, the use of our buildings have changed in the summer. The Welch, even absent any issue with, with renovations, is used by the For Kids Only program during the summer. And I think mixing those two programs could possibly be difficult. I also believe there were federal regulations governing the use of the cafeterias that actually require our cafeteria, our cafeteria staff, and that may be a contractual issue, too, I'm not sure. There were a lot of issues that went into play when this ended up going to, to the library, and it's been a wonderful service. It's, it's a great program. At first, I felt bad that, that the schools couldn't do this, but I've come to realize that, in a way, it's really good because it exposes the kids to the library, and they go down there every day, and they just happen to be there, and so they just happen to get involved in the programs that are provided, because they do have a really rich summer program of activities for kids. And I think that, in a way, it really works very nicely at the library. So, I think there are a lot of issues to look at, and we, we, we need to look at history, but we also do need to look at current laws on this, because I think that some of those did come into play those years ago.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Okay, the second item, new business, is the Statement of Interest for the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School and Center School. Mrs. Dunn, are we looking for a vote on these two items to submit to the City Council?
Yes. In order to properly get these statements of interest into the MSBA with their timelines, we need to take a vote tonight. We will submit a written documentation of tonight's vote tomorrow morning to the City Council. They will receive it Thursday at their February 27th meeting. It will then be referred to the subcommittee for their March 5th meeting, and then at that time, it will be, hopefully, moved along to the full committee for a vote on March 26th. I may be off on the March dates with the council, but their two March meetings will, will revolve around this discussion. So, I know that Dr. Kerbel and staff are already working on preparing the documentation for the Statement of Interest for both the high school and the center statements of interest, and I think it's a good thing to submit these this year. I have a good feeling this time.
Good.
Buy a lottery ticket.
I know this is an item we've discussed a number of times. To me, it seems like the next step we need to take to put forward the request of the Center School and the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School for the feasibility study for the replacement and/or renovation of each of those schools. So, take a motion first for the Center School, Mrs. Dunn? Hey, Archie, Mr. Hockman, make this motion.
Thank you. Motion, I'm making a motion to submit the following Statement of Interest to the MSBA regarding the Center School, resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 25th, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date. The School Committee of the City of Peabody, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated...
March 26.
2020, for the Center School located at 18 Irving Street, Peabody, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The MSBA priority selected is Priority Number 7, replacement and renovation of, or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The specific objective of this SOI is to partner with the MSBA in a feasibility study for the replacement of the Center School. The educational deficits of the Center School are articulated in the Center School SOI and include the need for gym space, cafeteria space, food service, servery, and kitchen space, much-needed upgrades to classrooms, meeting rooms, electrical, plumbing, and HVAC systems. And the School Committee hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman, for the motion. I have a second, Mr. Miko. Roll call vote, please, on this motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, and who would like the honor of the Peabody High School? Mrs. Dunn, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to submit the following Statement of Interest to the MSBA regarding the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School, resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 25th, 2020, prior to the Statement of Interest submission closing date. The School Committee of the City of Peabody, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 26th, 2020, for the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School located at 485 Lowell Street, Peabody, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The MSBA priority selected is Priority Number 7, replacement and renovation of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The specific objective of this SOI is to partner with the MSBA in a feasibility study for the replacement of the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School. The educational deficits of the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School are articulated in the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School Statement of Interest, and include the need for much-needed upgrades to classrooms, science areas, industrial arts classrooms, meeting rooms, electrical, plumbing, and HVAC systems, energy efficiencies, building envelope, disability accessibility, and security considerations. And the School Committee hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So moved.
Thank you. Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right. Excellent, thank you. That completes our agenda. Our next regular school committee meeting is on March 10th, 2020, here at the Higgins Middle School Library at 7:00 PM, and that'll be a day where we have our student government counterparts with us on that school committee meeting. Move to adjourn if there's no further business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn with the intention of going into executive session for the discussion of personnel issue, with the intention of not returning to open session.
Second. Heard that motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much.